Thank you. I will now... Hello, everyone. My name is Ray G. and I'm the Chair of Neighborhood Board Number 12. Want to call the meeting to order. It's now seven o'clock. Welcome, everyone, to the meeting. Mr. Sartre, would you please do the roll call?
Okay, absolutely. Roll call for Neighborhood 12, starting with Board Member Mason Iona, who I believe is still traveling. Board Member Jill Easely Allen.
Here.
Here, thank you. Board Member Ray G.
Present.
Present. Board Member Kathy Greavy.
Here, here.
Here, thank you. Board Member Audrey Hidano.
That's me. I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Paula Kurashige.
Present.
Present, thank you. Board Member Kalana Lee.
Here.
Here, thank you. Board Member Michael Lum. Well, I see him online, I guess.
I was having trouble with my spacebar wasn't working, but I'm here.
Okay, great, thank you. Board Member Larry Smith.
I'm here, present.
Here, thank you. Board Member Patrick Smith.
Here.
Here, okay, thank you. Board Member Philip Soon. Okay, still absent. And Board Member Sylvia Young, who I don't see her yet. So, okay. I believe that's nine of us, so we do have four.
Sorry, can you all hear me? Thank you, Mr. Sartre, for the roll call. Okay, let's start with the city monthly reports. Please know that speakers are limited to three minutes each, and these are representatives from our government. Starting first off with the Honolulu Fire Department. Do we have a representative here?
I do not see them online.
Thank you, Mr. Sartre. We do not have the fire department here, so we will proceed to the Honolulu Police Department. Do we have someone from District One? Present. No? Okay. Let's move on to District Five. I believe we have Sergeant Leighton Cato present.
Hello, that's me, yeah.
Hi, nice to meet you.
You too.
Thank you.
Okay, so for the month of July, we have assaults with one, auto thefts, we have two, burglaries was just one, robberies, we have zero, sexual assaults, zero, and misdemeanor assaults, two. Thefts are at four, and car break-ins, which is UEMVs, is four. Total calls for service is eight hundred twenty-three for July. And the tips for this month, due to there's a bunch of motor vehicle collisions on the freeway, so there's tips for aggressive driving and road rage. There's a few, I'll list a list here. So when you're driving, it's good to just stay calm and try to keep your emotions in check. Try to plan ahead and anticipate delays. That way you don't, you know, rush when you're driving. Focus on your driving, of course. Be cautious and courteous. Avoid creating a situation that may cause a provocation. Give angry drivers plenty of room. Avoid eye contact if possible. Use the left lane only when passing. Try to use your horn sparingly. Try not to tailgate or flash your lights if you're behind someone. Of course, don't yell obscenities or make inappropriate hand gestures. And of course, if you fear for your safety, call 911 and report where your location is, or drive to the nearest police station, and we can help you out there. Pending your questions?
Thank you. Members of... I guess I'll start with board members. Does any of the board members have any questions for the Sergeant, Sergeant Cato? If so, you can raise your hand, and if I don't see you, you can ask to be recognized. I don't see any hands. Oh, Paula, I see your hand raised. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Officer, for coming tonight. I wanted to know if you caught the truck that I mentioned, I mean, the Toyota, I mentioned truck, that I mentioned many, many times, and it was supposed to be in the minutes this time, but it's not there. So I just want to remind you again that it's Y-A-B Yankee. I want to say a level, but I know that's wrong. And Bravo, two-four-six. White Toyota. We've called it in many, many, ooh-choo, plenty of times. This is at least five times, and he was here again on Alika at thirty-one oh-seven for the second time. And he seems to be stealing flowers and putting them in the back of his truck, and then going to the park and stealing all that stuff, too. Whatever's in the park, he just cuts it, fills up his truck with anything from Kauakinani down through the valley, and now he's coming out on Alika. The white Toyota truck. And no one seems to be able to catch him. But the big problem now is that he has altered, he's altered his license and changed parts of it. So I do have a picture of it, but I don't know how to get it back to you folks to let you know that he... I'm messing with the black pen on his license plate of Y-A-B two-four-six. Could you please get him out of this area? Please, thank you.
Okay, yeah, that's my sector for tonight, so I'll make checks and have the guys... And if you want to call 911, if you do have a picture of it, we can upload it into a report.
I gave Officer Hudson the picture if he was here. He has a picture, but you got to remember, he messed with the license plate now.
Yeah.
So I hope you folks can catch him, because he's such an anti... And he actually stole all my anthuriums, the flowers. And he takes anything he wants for flowers. I think he might be going to Punch Bowl, District One. And I've also told District One last month, but it didn't go put in the minutes, that I think he might be selling flowers downtown or wherever there's a cemetery. Sometimes he fills it up, and recently, he's even stolen a whole banana plant, bananas tree and all, which helps the farmer, but helps us in the area clean up the banana. But he took the whole thing, put it in his truck. Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions for the... For the Sergeant?
Just to thank him.
Thank you, Sergeant. Anyone else? Last call for the board members. If not, anyone from the public has any questions? Or are they allowed to ask questions? I don't see any hands raised. Okay. Thank you, Sergeant Leighton Cato, for your report. Really appreciate it. Next, we have, I see in the audience... Do we have anyone from District One? Or was that Lieutenant Hatiko visiting? No one from District One. I'm going to move on to the Neighborhood Board Security Watch Reports. Member Paula Kurashige, would you like to make a report?
I think I covered it all when I spoke with the officer just now. Just everybody be aware of a white truck, a white Toyota truck, and has the license front license. I'm not sure about the back, because I haven't seen a picture that... You've got to turn it in if you can. And we've already had one, two, three, four people turn it in to HPD, and I have called District Five, but we still can't get rid of him. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula, for your report. Anyone... Does any of the members have any questions for Ms. Paula, Member Paula Kurashige? If I don't see your hands, please speak up. Nope, no hands raised. Thank you, Paula, for your report. I'm going to be moving on to the Board of Water Supply, and I think I see Mr. Yanos, Jimmy Yanos, in the audience. So Yanos, the floor is yours.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jimmy Yanos, and I represent the Board of Water Supply tonight. I'm going to be starting off with some concerns from the previous month. First concern, first question was, what is the scope of what can be claimed concerning damage or mud on private property caused by main breaks? And I'm here to report that customers can file a claim with the Board of Water Supply if they believe BWS operations, infrastructure, or water service caused property damage, personal injury, or financial loss. When submitting a claim, be as descriptive as possible with supporting documentation such as pictures, repair estimates, and receipts. The BWS will then review the claim to determine whether or not the BWS will reimburse for the reported damages. And the second concern from last month, second question was, what was discussed in the meeting between our manager and chief engineer, Ernest Lau, or Ernie Lau, and Chip D? I'm here to report that Chip D. and BWS have monthly meetings, which Ernie sometimes attends. The most recent meeting on July fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five, Chip D. indicated that their report should be completed soon. We are hopeful it'll be received by the end of the month, barring any unforeseen circumstances. Please note that while we are not certain if Ernie was in this particular meeting, the information that was shared with our capital projects team from Chip D. would be the same. And an extension will most likely be given to the contractor. So that leads to the latest update concerning the Dowset and Uiva Water System Improvements Project in Oahu. I'm here to report that all required documents have been submitted to Chip D. for review. We continue attending monthly meetings with Chip D.'s staff, and also have a separate monthly session with their director. The focus of these meetings is to address this project alongside other high-priority BWS projects and issues. And please note that Ernie Lau attends both these meetings. So that was concerns from last month, so I'll move on to my monthly report for August. There's no main breaks to report from last month, so I'll move on to the general water announcements. I'm going to be talking about the Imagine a Day Without Water event. Bring the entire Ohana for this year's annual Imagine a Day Without Water Day, a free, family-friendly event on Saturday, September twentieth, from ten AM to two PM at Woodward Mall Central Park. During the event, you can learn about the One Water concept and why water is essential to, essential to every part of life. Explore interactive displays from over twenty city, state, and community organizations, and enjoy hands-on activities, prize giveaways, including a forty-five-gallon barrel, and much more. Find out more at www boardofwatersupply.com/onewaterhawaii. That concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Yanos, for your report. Board members, I'll start with you. Does anyone have any questions for the Board of Water Supply, Mr. Yanos? If I don't see your hand raised. Oh, I see Paula first. Please go ahead. You have the floor.
At last meeting last month, I brought up the fact that when we have a water main break on Alika, all that dirt comes down to my house, the mud. And now asking what I can do to get, because I have to clean up, because the mud comes into my driveway, and then people track it in the house. And I was waiting for you to tell me what I can do to get some of that water money back. Yeah, and I appreciate that being a fact that we've had men come and clean. But this last time, there was still a lot of mud that came down. Thank you. What can I do?
Mr. Yanos, would you like to repeat about what you said earlier about the complaints process? Perhaps, Miss Kurashige couldn't.
Yes. Pull up my notes again. So yeah, customers can file a claim with BWS if they believe operations, infrastructure, or water service caused property damage. And to file a claim, customers can call eight oh eight seven four eight five one eight one. And when we, when you submit a claim, we ask you be as descriptive as possible with supporting documentation such as pictures, repair estimates, and receipts.
Great. Thank you. Other members, do you have any other questions? I'm sorry, I do not see any hands up at this time. Feel free to use your voice or on the mic. No questions for Mr. Yanos? Thank you so much, Mr. Yanos, for your attendance tonight. Appreciate your report from the Board of Waters.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Miss Chair?
Yes, Miss...
I wanted to tell him that between seven and eight o'clock in the morning, this is a school zone, but trucks coming in from the Board of Water Supply going to Alika are speeding in the school zone while kids are walking on the sidewalks. And that happened yesterday and today. So if it's a contractor, the contractor needs to be told by Water, Board of Water Supply that this is a school zone, and it should be only twenty miles an hour, even though it's not posted on the signs yet, if that ever happens.
Thank you, Member Kurashige. Mr. Yanos, do you have a response?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up. I'll definitely bring that up, bring that back to our team and let our truck guys know, slow down.
Thank you. Anyone else? Does any other members have any questions for the Board of Water Supply?
Thank you.
Please feel free to use your voice. Raise your hand. I do not see anyone else. Thank you again. Oh, I'm sorry. Do I hear someone? Okay. Thank you again, Mr. Yanos, from the Board of Water Supply. I will now move to item number three, filling of vacancies. Once again, just to let every... Oh, I'm sorry. Does anyone... Am I supposed to allow the public to ask questions? Mr. Sartre?
Yep, but yes, there were no questions.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I will move to item number three, filling of vacancies. There are three vacancies in Subdistrict One Punch Bowl. Oh, one moment, please. Proof of residency is required, oath of office as needed. And I want to let... Oh, okay, I'll mention that first, and then I have... I need to mention that there's another vacancy forthcoming. Sorry, my dogs are barking. Does anyone know, or any, does any board member know of anyone that's interested? Please speak up now. If not, I will move to the public members. Sorry if I don't see your... Okay. Is there anyone from the public that's interested in filling a vacancy in Subdistrict One, which is Punch Bowl?
No.
No, thank you. Okay. I don't know if this is the correct section to mention this, but just to let the board members know that there's a fourth vacancy. Member Philip Soon sent a letter to, or email to myself and former Chair Smith, indicating that he moved to Nevada with his family, and it was sudden. He apologizes for not being able to say goodbye in person or on video, but he thanked everyone for allowing him to participate, and he is sorely missed. So we just want to let all of you know that Member Soon has left, has left the board, and we now have four Subdistrict One vacancies. Does anyone have any comments, or once again, any comments or anything to say? Nope, thank you. Okay, so that being said, I'm going to move on to item four, report from non-board events. And the first item is Oahu Metropolitan Planning Organization, and that's my report, since I represent the board at this meeting, held once a month at the Waho MPO. And this time, this meeting, the Waho MPO meeting, is more about organization, like how we first organized in our July meeting by, sorry, by selecting the vice, the chair, and the vice chair, and all of that. So they also went over the tip for Transportation Improvement Plan for twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-five revision, and I kind of went over that the previous meeting. So otherwise, there's nothing new to report. So that'll be the end of my report. Does anybody have any questions, any members? Or members, do you have any questions? Let's see any... Nope, okay. Any members from the public? You can find all the information on the Oahu MPO website of the agenda of what we spoke about, as well as the submission and presentation. So, thank you. Item number four, the Papakalea Community Updates. Mr. Mike, do you have any reports from the Papakalea Community, Mr. Board Member Lum?
Unfortunately, no. I haven't made the contact yet to those folks there. And seeing as how I'm now the sole representative of Punch Bowl District, I will see what I can do about getting, maybe getting some of our Papakalea representatives back on the board. But I will work on it between now and next month, getting a full report.
Perfect. Thank you so much for your report. Not a problem that you weren't able to report on it this month, but we appreciate your efforts. Board members, does anyone have any suggestions or questions relating to this topic for the Papakalea Community Updates? I don't see anyone's hand raised. Anyone in the audience wanting to make a comment on this? Any public members? No. Thank you, Mr. Sartre. I will move on to item number five, which is residence and community concerns. The community, for anyone who wants to speak to this item, is limited to three minutes each. Sorry, my dog is just acting... No. Anyone from, I guess I'll start with the board members. Board members, do you... Do you have any concerns? No? Okay. Thank you. I will move on to the members from the public. I recognize the person in the black shirt. Please identify yourself, and it's nice to meet you.
Velina, O'Cardenas Pintor Koinoa Pihua, O'Cards Koinoa Kappa Kappa. Are you able to hear me?
Would you please repeat that again? It's a bit hard to hear. I don't know if the other members can hear or not, but we'd appreciate it.
Aloha, O'Cardenas Pintor Koinoa Pihua, O'Cards Koinoa Kappa Kappa. Aloha, my name is Cardenas Pintor, or Cards for short. I'm a part of the Kalihipalama Neighborhood Board. I would talk to you guys beforehand or after this meeting, but seeing that everyone's online, it is very eye-opening. Currently, our board is currently on recess. So we are expanding and looking at other boards and seeing what they're doing in their meetings, and seeing how we can all connect with each other and how we can work together. So very happy to be here. Thank you for having us in Oahu, Punch Bowl. It is amazing to be here. And what you guys are doing to help the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Cards. It's nice to meet you. Board members, would you like to say hello to Cards or any comments? Any suggestions? Feel free to speak up.
Hi, nice to meet you.
Oh, Member Easely, please go ahead. You have the floor.
No, I just want to say it's really nice of you to come by. I think it's great to merge boards together and see how we can help one another. So thank you so much for joining us today.
Paula.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to say hello to Mr. Cards? No? If not, thank you again for visiting us. We really appreciate seeing our neighbors.
I'm sorry, Chair.
Oh, yes. Um, members, Smith?
Yes, I would encourage you to come to the commission meeting, which will be on next Monday evening, which is, you know, the overall board, the commission oversees all the boards. So we meet at where you're at right now, at six o'clock next Monday. So come see us. Thanks. Thank you.
Great, Cards. You got an invite from the Chair of the Neighborhood Commission. How wonderful. Anyone else, members?
Welcome.
Go ahead, Ms. Paula.
Just to say welcome. Come anytime.
Ms. Paula Kurashige, Member Kurashige welcomes you, Cards. Anyone else? If not, thank you, Cards, for introducing yourself, and it's very nice to meet you on behalf of the board. Do we have any other, any other persons with any residents, any residents present with any other concerns if your item's not listed on the agenda? Now's your time, time to speak up. Does any board members have any residential concerns on behalf of people who are not in attendance tonight? No? With that being said, I'm going to close this section and move on to item number six, elected officials, which are limited to five minutes each in their presentation. First off, we have Director Kim Hashiro from Mayor Rick Blangiardi's office, or Representative. Director Hashiro, are you here?
Hi, yes, I am.
Go right ahead to the floor.
Okay, thank you. So this month, we have highlights from the mayor's newsletter, which I will link in the chat. The city made a major land acquisition on South Beretania to support a future expansion of HPD's operations. Mayor Blangiardi also announced additions to the city's leadership team, including a new assistant zoo director for the Honolulu Zoo. Demolition begins at sixteen fifteen Alawai Boulevard as the city prepares to build a new affordable housing complex on the property. And a massive new solar canopy is coming to the Alawai Golf Course parking lot, keeping cars cool and powering the clubhouse. Finally, members of the Honolulu Youth Commission discuss a wide range of topics with the mayor during a meeting in July. The only departmental follow-up issue was regarding Board Member Sylvia Young's suggestion to improve traffic further during the twenty-twenty-six King Kamehameha Day Parade and Golden Week Parade by moving the local traffic only sign further out into the intersection during these Waikiki parades. And this was initially referred to DTS. However, Alamana Boulevard at Kalia Road is actually under State DOT's jurisdiction. And so this suggestion was forwarded to State DOT. And that concludes my report, and I'm here if there's any questions.
Thank you, Director Kim Hashiro, for your detailed report. We really appreciate it. Board members, does anyone have any questions for Director Kim Hashiro? Please feel free to say something, and you'll be acknowledged. Yes, Member Patrick Smith.
Hi, good evening, Director Hashiro. I have a two-part about the DMV, which I see that you're the director for. The first part is that I personally had an issue with my VIN number of my vehicle that now that it's two years old from being a brand-new vehicle, I had to go in and register it. But I was not allowed to register online. It was just like a little error point. And I had to come in, and I don't know what, why, what the issue was. And the person serving me, the clerk, just said it was like a system error. So I would just ask that if I'm able to register in person, I don't, you know, without any additional documentation or anything like that, I should be able to register online, because obviously, that's an inconvenience to me, but also it's a stress on the resources of the government since, or the city, since I have to actually come in and take resources. So with that said, just so you know, with that said, let me go on to the second part, and that is, I will say when I went in, and I looked on the site for any public comment, and I noticed it's not there. You know, I didn't see anywhere you could make a comment. But I will say I was really impressed... But I will say I was really impressed with how the efficiency of of the office was run. There was a gentleman there that was the concierge. And there, there was an older person in front of me that had some real difficulty, and the concierge, I think, took, was very patient, helped him out. You know, I waited, but it was, it was really good to see that he was very helpful. And I just want to say kudos to you and to your department for um really doing a great job, I think. Thank you.
Thank you, members.
Thank you. Really appreciate that feedback. Our team works very hard um working and operating um at the DMV or satellites is not an easy job. Um, and we really strive to provide the best service possible. Uh, with respect to your VIN number issue, um, if you don't mind sharing that with me offline, I'd like to follow up and find out what the issue was, um, where you weren't able to renew online. Um, because if you're having that, or you, because you had that issue, I want to make sure that we address it. Would you be willing to do that?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, I can do that offline. Um, I will, Chair, if I'm able, if if I could ask one more follow-up. Uh, since I'm complimenting Director Hashiro, since I'm complimenting your department, I really would like to pass this on to the mayor, because I know coming from you giving your report, if you do that to a mayor's representative, it might be a little self-serving to say someone came in and, and, you know, gave a compliment. So I I would be very willing to uh do that. So if you have a suggested way, I would, I could go about that. I don't know if it's just getting online and emailing the mayor directly or whatever, but if you let me know, I'll be happy to follow up with, with that too. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, great. Yes, I will definitely um send you different options, and you can decide which way you'd like to submit feedback.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, yes, everyone, especially your department deserves a lot of credit for all the hard work that they do with the customers. Members, yes, thank you. Members, do we have anyone else that has any other comments, or now's your chance to speak to Director Hashiro? Ms. Paula, I see your hand raised. You are recognized.
The question is, um, somebody called me and asked me if I buy a car, which they did, can they register the car without a driver's license because they're new from California?
Without a Hawaii driver's license? Is that what you mean? They have a California driver's license?
Yes.
Yes, they, they would be able to do that. They need to provide identification to identify themselves as the legal owner for the car. But we, we do understand that there are out-of-state, um, you know, either visitors or new residents that um have purchased cars and need to register. So that is possible?
That is possible to buy a car and get it registered, even though you don't have, you only have a California license.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, both of you, for your inquiry and response. Board members, do we have any other questions for Director Hashiro? I don't see any hands, but please feel free to speak up. If not, Director Hashiro, thank you so much for your um report. We really appreciate all the work that you put into getting other responses for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You too.
Thank you. Next, we have the council member Tyler Dos Santos's office. Do we have anyone here from his office? Is Ms. Leonardo in the audience by any chance?
Uh, hi, it's Peggy Mirzwa. I'm with Tyler. Hi, Lisa is. No, no worries. Uh, Lisa's out. So I am here to um share her report with you folks, well, the office report. So we do have an update on the booth pool restrooms and shower lights not working. Um, in June, a constituent had reported to the office that the lights in the park pool restroom showers weren't working. We reported to DPR and received a response August fifth. And the issue was initially addressed on June seventeenth when Naresco, um, an accredited energy service provider working with DPR conducted a site visit. And during the inspection, it was determined the light fixtures in the men's and women's showers are broken. Um, they're confirming the repair, they've compared, confirmed the repairs are pending. And there, Naresco is waiting uh for their subcontractors to complete the necessary work. DPR has flagged the repair as a top priority because of the safety concerns raised by park users. Um, and we'll continue to follow up with Naresco and uh DPR to make sure this gets finished, but wanted to give you folks that update. Um, and then also the new speed bumps in Papakolea and on New Uanu Avenue are in. And I know that for many years, uh, the community was asking for speed control measures. And so it's been a collaboration with DTS and the state DOT, and the speed bumps are now installed along Papakolea, along Tenlis Drive, and uh two on New Uanu Avenue and one at Robinson Lane in Craigside Place. So thank you, everybody who supported that. And also, I guess, I'll, I'll drop it in the chat, but just resources in case, like, you know, game rooms are something that's important, so there's a hotline can call, and I'll also drop in the chat a link to our newsletter. Does anybody have anything for me to bring back?
Thank you for your report. Board members, does anyone have any questions for the council members representative? Please feel free to.
Paula.
Paula, please, you have the floor. Go ahead.
Um, the big question is a big one, because I'm getting the calls from seniors in this area who want to leave their houses and go downtown, to live in the housing downtown, which we had, and the Chair, Ray Ghee, uh, was helping me with it. But what happens is that they go down there and they move out of their house, but then they have no parking for their car. And then they have no means to get their car inside, even if they need a caregiver or their family needs to come and visit them, or if a doctor has to visit. Um, the parking is very, very lean. And then Ray also knows what to do as far as, so I wanted it put on for the seniors so they know what they can do to save themselves as far as they're not leaving their car in New Uanu on the street. And it's very serious because they depend on their car even though they're old or senior. And I use those words because that's what I'm being called. But it's serious in the fact that what are they gonna do, even if they want to leave there? And they, they can't walk, but they can drive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, please go ahead, Ms. Mirzwa. Do you have?
Oh, no, I just thank, thank you, Paula, for sharing that. I'll bring that concern to council member.
Thank you. Do we have any other board members?
I want to know why he voted the way he voted against the seniors. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. Anyone else? Any other questions for council members representative? Please feel free to speak up. Yes, Patrick Smith, member Smith.
Uh, good evening, Peggy. Um, I have a question about the uh charter commission. Uh, you know, I, I haven't looked in last month, so I hope it, maybe it's changed, and I know. But it's very unclear to me how the process unfolds. There's clear dates for um a citizen or a group to submit uh proposals. But it's very unclear to me if, if there's going to be an opportunity for the public to comment on those proposals before they're accepted. And um either, maybe if, if, if you could report and kind of make that a little bit more clear, or I mean, better yet, is to sort of ask the, the charter commission to make that more clear on their website. So anyway, that's, that's just uh my observations and my request. Thank you very much.
Thank you, members. Thank you. Thank you, council members representative. Board members, do you have any more? Um, this is your last opportunity to ask um the council members representative any questions. If not, I'm going to be moving to public members. Does any members of the public have any questions for um this?
Can I ask one more question?
Yes, you may, Ms. Um, Kurshige. Please go ahead.
I want to know when Dos Santos, because he put, he put the speeding down in the school zone to twenty, which is great, but nobody's listening to it. When are the signs going to be put in to stop all the speeding in New Uanu? The other day, we had two minor birds killed, a dove killed, and I don't know whatever. I've been having my kids go out and clean up messes, but they don't seem to care about the speeding. They're using it as a tunnel to get back down to the Poly or up from the Poly. But they forget that people live here.
Thank you, member Kurshige. Thank you. Does Ms. Um, Ms. Mirzwa, do you have any response or?
Um, I'll let him know. I do know that DTS is working to get all of the signs up for the twenty mile per hour, so that, that's going to be a little bit of a process rolling it out in every school zone. But we'll bring, bring the concerns back.
Thank you.
I understand that the police cannot cite unless the signs are up.
That's probably correct. Yes, thank you.
And I want to know how, not next year or the year after for the school zone. Because when they start killing minor birds, that's getting a little bit much. A pair were killed.
Thank you, member Kurshige. That is so noted. Really appreciate your concern.
Thank you.
Thank you. That being said, thank you, council members representative, Ms. Mirzwa, for coming tonight and for sharing all that information with us. I will now move on to the governor. Oh, I'm sorry. Does anyone have any comments? I thought I heard something. No. Okay, I'm going to be moving on to item C, Governor Josh Green's representative. Is Ms. Setzler here or anyone from the governor's office?
Uh, no, but uh Senator Rhodes is here in person.
Sure, okay. Let's move on to item D, Senator Rhodes. Welcome, Senator. You now have the floor.
Evening, everyone. Uh, let's see, what do I got for you tonight? Um, the Hawaii State Judiciary is warning the public to be on alert for duty jury scams as three hundred and thirty thousand jury questionnaires have been mailed out statewide for potential jury service in twenty twenty-six. By law, Hawaii residents must, must respond to jury questionnaires. However, scammers may try to exploit this by impersonating court officials or law enforcement officers and claiming they have an outstanding warrant for failing to appear for jury duty. Um, victims have been pressured to pay a fine immediately to avoid arrest. So that part of it is all nonsense. Don't pay any attention to that. It's important to remember that the Hawaii State Judiciary does not call, email, or text to demand payment or personal information for jury-related matters. All official jury service communications are sent through the US Post Office unless you have contacted the judiciary first with a specific question about your duty, your jury duty. So just mainly just be alert. Um, but this is um, the, the questionnaires are I got one already, so I suppose they're, they're going out uh all over the place. Um, after a period of relative stability, COVID nineteen activity is again on the rise. Unfortunately, I can attest to that myself. After five years of dodging it, I got it at the last month. But don't get it if you can avoid it. Um, right now, COVID is outpacing flu and RSV and test positivity, emergency room visits, and hospital admissions. Please take reasonable precautions to avoid being sick, and you might check on your vaccination status as well. Right now, the positivity rate is one of the highest it's ever been. I don't, I don't know if anybody remembers, but they used to have the warnings if it was five percent. Now it's uh sixteen percent, so it's, it's hot right now. And uh at the end of June, there were twenty hospital, uh hospitalizations from COVID. About a week and a half of those, up to seventy. Where no one has died yet, which is a good thing, but just um, uh, do what you have to do, avoid it, because it's not much fun. And for Sylvia Young, I don't know if she's here in ninety. No, anyway, I haven't, I haven't forgotten about her question. I'll try to get to that uh before next um month. That's it.
Thank you, Senator, for your um informative report. Board members, do we have any questions for the Senator?
I have a question.
Yes, you have the floor.
Um, I got the jury duty deal uh through the mail last week. And they insisting on me going to the doctor to show that I'm disabled. But then there's another clause that says if you're eighty or over, it don't bother you. So why are they bothering me because I can't get to the doctor and I'm telling them what's wrong with me? Um, why don't they stop at eighty, like they say in their bulletin? Thank you.
I, I don't, I, I'm reluctant to ask your age, but if, if you are eighty or above, you can just check off and say you don't want to go. But if there's any question about it, there's a phone number or an email on that form somewhere that you can call and ask them.
Yeah, but it wouldn't help me because I already tried. So that means I still gotta go to the doctor and get a certificate to say I am disabled. Even though I have fractured spine.
What did they say on the phone?
They say you still have to go to the doctor.
Okay. Well, I mean.
And I'll be eighty-four.
Well, if you're eighty, if you're eighty, you can just check off that box and you don't have to go.
I did.
You don't have to go.
But they're still telling me I need to go to the doctor. Oh, my. So I, I, I'll handle it if I have, but I don't understand at all.
Call my office tomorrow and I'll take a look at my own form and see what it says, but I'm quite, I'm quite confident that if you're more than eighty, you just check that box off and you don't have to do anything else.
Oh, I love you for that. If that's true. Thank you.
I believe it is.
Thank you, Paula, and thank you.
I love you for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator, for the response. Anyone else? Any other board members have a question for the Senator Carl Rhodes? If not, please speak up or read ahead.
Excuse me, Chair.
Yes, please go ahead, member Smith.
Okay, um, good evening, Senator. I hate to sound like a broken record, but I want to bring up the Waikiki Surveillance Network. That's my term for it. They call it a safety project. And that is, uh, my latest understanding is that the, the Director Lambert, I believe, the head of the State Law Enforcement Division, there's some talk of adding drones to that proposal. And I don't know, because he's going to come to Waikiki uh Neighborhood Board next in a couple of weeks or a few weeks. So I would just really ask you to keep your eyes out for this and, and, you know, stay on top of it and just see what they're doing and make sure there's appropriate oversight. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, absolutely. If it uh, if it requires legislation, it will come through the Judiciary Committee, which I chair, so we'll, we'll have a chance to look at it.
Well, I'm sorry, Chair, if I can follow up. I, I would just, I would just say that uh I hope it requires legislation, but I don't know. I mean, you, you never know sometimes, especially in the national circumstances we are, you know, what, what the law enforcement agencies will do. So anyway, thank you, sir.
Thank you, members. Thank you, Senator Rhodes. Any other board members? Do you have any other questions? If not, I'm going to be moving on to the audience. Anyone in the audience have any questions for Senator Rhodes? Please step up to the mic. If not, thank you very much, Senator, once again, for your informative report. We appreciate your attendance.
Have a, have a good evening.
You have a good evening too. Thank you. Next up, we have District Twenty-seven Representative Jenna Takinouchi, and I see her ready to give her report. Representative, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. Hi, everybody. Good to see everybody. Uh, okay. All right, okay. Uh, I just wanted to um start with an update. Um, I think I've mentioned it to this board before. Um, I started up what I call Park Talks, where I'm just going to places across the district to just talk story with whoever wants to show up. I actually have one coming up um nearby, probably where most of the board members here are. Um, we're gonna be going to New Uanu uh Valley Park um on Saturday, the thirtieth, um, August thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. I'll be there from ten AM to eleven thirty AM. Um, you'll be able to see us. I usually try to grab one of the benches, but if not, I'll bring a table also. Like, you should be able to see us. We'll be close by the parking lot. Um, this is going to be informal talk story. Um, you know, if there's a question or you know somebody in the neighborhood who just has something quick, um, they can come ask me and I can take it back to the office, or, you know, sometimes these turn into like a whole hour and a half talk story, which is also kind which is also kind of fun to see what's going on across the district. So please feel free to come by. Um, also, I'll put a link in the chat. Um, I actually have a couple other, um, little talk stories and events I have planning coming up. I'm just kind of putting them all on a website that, you know, anyone can check at any time and everyone is free to come out. I am a little, um, because I have so many events, I'm not always able to mail everybody for every single one. So I'm kind of trying to do, you know, very just like area-specific mailers for reminders, but everything will be put on the website online. So, um, please, um, bookmark it and everyone, uh, board members and everyone in the public is free to come to any of the events we list there. Um, another quick update I got from the Hawaii Emergency Management Agency. This is probably a little bit more pertinent to, um, people who maybe live along Poly Highway and kind of on the, um, eleva height side of the district. Uh, I know there's a lot of questions about sirens recently, especially given, you know, the recent, um, uh, emergencies or the warning we had with the tsunami. Um, in our area, there was a siren that probably serves like kind of Putunui to maybe like the Poly Highway area. It used to be at the top of eleva heights, um, at the very top of eleva drive. But that one broke and they're actually relocating that a little lower in eleva to eleva Neighborhood Park, which is near, um, Lulena and Eholena Street, if you're familiar with that, um, kind of just below Nautinoia Te House. I think that's the siren that's probably going to be, you know, giving the alert to people kind of, um, along that kind of Putunui to like New Oanu Avenue and along Poly Highway area. So that's just an FYI. If you haven't heard a siren recently, it's because the eleva drive one has been out of commission. They found they couldn't fix it, so they are installing a new one near eleva Neighborhood Park to service our area. Um, that should be up and running. I think they're doing construction now over the next maybe month, month and a half. So after that, you guys, um, hopefully should be getting, um, more alerts, um, in the Poly Highway area. I'll also put a link in the chat where you can, if if you don't hear a siren, actually, even if you're kind of farther away, Haime does have like a dashboard where you can kind of check the status of sirens and where they are and where the nearest one to you is. Um, actually, after I started sharing this news, a couple people, um, you know, shared with me that they actually went to the map and they had questions about their sirens. So please check out the one in your area. It's a really good resource to make sure everyone is getting those alerts about when to, you know, like, look for more information and to tune in on things. Um, oh, and sorry, I know there's an outstanding thing. Uh, Paula, I know we are still trying to follow up about the children's crossing signs that you're looking for around New Oanu Elementary School. Um, sorry, we still don't have an update for that, but I do have Kelton checking up on that. Um, and again, even the issue, we, I know last time we talked about the speeding issue along Pelikane uh, and the issue there, uh, we still have something open for that that we have not received response yet, but we will let everyone know as soon as we have something back about both those issues. And if anybody has anything new I can take back, um, please let me know or anything in general.
Thank you, Representative Takinouchi, for your informative report. We appreciate it. Board members, do you have any questions for the representative?
Question?
Yes, Paula, please go ahead.
I'm sorry, I'm not on, but, um, I don't want to push any more buttons. Anyway, I'm buttoned out. Um, you know, for Pelikane, I understand that's a C. I mean, not a C. Um, Alika is a CIP budget because of the school and darkness. But Pelikane, I understand it's because, according to Regi, that's because people are building there and they are responsible under city and county to put in their own sidewalk now. But I want to know what is really going on up there because before someone really gets killed. Thank you.
Um, just a comment to that, that, um, this Representative Takinouchi is a state representative and sidewalks are handled under the Department of Planning and Permitting. So that's the city and county part of it. But thank you, Representative, for, um.
I I'm I'm just trying to tell her that she's helping us. I'm trying to tell you, she's helping us, but I realized after a while, with all the things going on, that Kelton's killing himself for no reason. So, um, that that is a school zone also. So somebody got to do something about the kids walking down the middle of the road there. And anyway, without repeating myself, uh, thank you.
Thank you, Paula. Yeah, and and Kelton is happy to do the follow-up for all these things we're tracking. Um, but yeah, I will let you guys know as soon as we get our, um, response back as well.
I appreciate him and thank him. I don't want to, I don't want to make you Paula agencies at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. Thank you, Representative. Board members, does anyone else have a question for the representative? If not, I will move to the public members of the audience. Do you have any questions for Representative Takinouchi? I don't see anyone stepping up to the mic, so I want to just thank Representative Takinouchi for making her report tonight and attending the meeting. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. I will now move on to District Forty-six. Someone from the Office of Representative Amy Peruso has requested to attend the meeting. Um, I think her name is Ella. Please feel free to identify yourself and introduce yourself to the board.
Hi, I'm Ella, interning with Rep. Amy Peruso this summer, and I also have lifeboat intern Olivia here with us as well. We're just going to do a quick presentation about pesticides in Hawaii and the impact to your community and to Hawaii as a whole.
Thank you. Please proceed.
So here's just some general basics about pesticides. There are substances that are designed to kill agricultural pests, including insects, weeds, fungi, and lebs. They can be chemical and synthetic or biological, and the chemical ones are often more dangerous to human health and the environment. Um, there's also two categories, which are general use and restricted use. General use are pesticides that you can get over the counter, such as Roundup. The restricted use is going to be more what we're focusing on today. So restricted-use pesticides are pesticides that are required certification of purchase and use, and they're restricted due to significant environmental and health impacts. They're most commonly sprayed on the North Shore and Central Oahu and West Kauai. And Act forty-five, starting in twenty nineteen, restricted-use pesticides must be reported to the Hawaii Department of Agriculture and Biosecurity annually, and it also establishes hundred buffer zones around schools during school hours. So two prevalent examples of restricted-use pesticides in Hawaii are one-three D and metamethium. For one-three D, about a hundred and seventy-five thousand pounds were sprayed just in twenty nineteen. It's a groundwater contaminant and it is prone to drift and notably is a carcinogen, which means that it causes cancer. It's also toxic in the air. It can cause respiratory impacts, dizziness, nausea, and vomiting. We also have metamethium, which about thirty thousand pounds were sprayed in twenty nineteen. Um, it is very, very highly prone to drift. It is confirmed to drift, um, around one mile, and it is also believed to drip past that as well. It causes weakness, blurred vision, cramps, pupil constriction, sweating, lower pulse, and muscle tremors.
Ms. Chair? Ms. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Paula.
Did you ask her to slow down because it's not coming? The words are being mixed together.
Okay, um, she has up to five minutes, but yes, um, please feel free to go ahead and explain, uh, Ms. Ella. Please continue.
Yes.
Oh, sorry, did you want us to go slower with the talking or the slideshow?
Probably.
Talking.
Talking, okay, thank you.
Okay, sorry about that. Um, so I'll talk about two exemptions to Act forty-five. One of them is going to be neonicotinoids. They are pesticides that are not currently classified as restricted use, and that means that they're not subject to reporting. Um, they're toxic to pollinators and birds. And what's interesting about them is that they are systemic, which means that instead of sprayed, they're placed into the seeds and roots of plants, and that makes the whole plant toxic, which most of that pesticide is lost in the soil upon application. Um, right now, neonicots are very commonly used in Hawaii because they are a main combatant of CRV. Oh, now I know what you're speaking of. Um, we also have experimental field trials. So major companies such as Bayer and Monsanto, sorry, Bayer, also known as Monsanto, and Syngenta, test GMO crops on Hawaiian lands, which could have adverse consequences on our agricultural resources. And these may be exempt from reporting. Either way, it is easier for them to spray larger amounts and ignore rules just due to their power as a large corporation compared to, um, smaller farmers. So as you can see, Act forty-five is a good start, but it's not enough to address the needs of our community. The current buffer zone is only a hundred feet in schools, but as we saw earlier, metamethium travels up to a mile. It also conflicts with the Federal Insecticide, Fungicide, and Red Dendyset Act because that law legally requires applicators to follow rules on the label. But Act forty-five, um, the reporting system makes it pretty easy to cut corners. For example, you're not required to put the time applied when you're reporting your annual use of pesticides, and that means that someone could use restricted pesticide in the morning close to a school, and they could say that they did it in the afternoon after school hours. Um, there's also no mandated soil, water, and air testing, which means that companies and other applicators can more easily destroy the land and pass problems off to the next holder. So here's just a couple maps for you guys. The first one is actually going to be a screenshot of the, um, restricted-use pesticide reporting form. As you can see, the green areas are required, areas in the white is not required. Um, so aspects of just time applied, the crop, the site, the pest, um, the dilution rate, those are all actually not going to be required. We also have a map of Oahu as a whole, which all the red and orange areas are going to be the areas where restricted-use pesticides were sprayed in twenty nineteen. Um, thankfully, your district is actually not being sprayed right now with restricted-use pesticides, um, but still good to keep in mind. We also just have a map of all the schools in your area. That's just good to be aware of, um, because schools, of course, are a very sensitive place for pesticides because we don't want any, um, restricted-use pesticides to be near our Kiki. So here are some ideas for the twenty twenty extension floating around our office. Um, the main priority is a better reporting system to ensure detailed and accurate data regarding pesticides. We're also looking to increase buffer zones in size and frequency, so up to about a quarter, half mile for not only schools but other places such as hospitals, parks, homes, um, things like that. Also looking to increase the fines and punishments for illegal use, hopefully classify neonicots and restricted-use pesticides, and increase mandated testing, and also advocate for transparency in lately. So here's how you can help. A main way to show your support is to consider adopting resolutions. We do have kind of a resolution template we're working on at our office right now. So once that that's ready, we'll be sure to share it with you. You can also share your experience and testify, look community meetings, sign up for emails and alerts to stay informed, contact your elected officials, ask you about studies in schools, and stand with farmers by supporting locally-owned organic farmers and helping other farmers transition to organic practices. We also wanted to quickly highlight Rewind Your Campus. Um, they are an organization focusing on eradicating pesticides use in schools. And unfortunately, this event has passed, but, um, we just wanted to let you know about this organization. And then here's just some quick links. We have our community partner, HAPA, um, their website that you can take a look at. We also have camera resources that we've made in our office and a map series that HAPA made using data, um, from twenty nineteen that they got because of Act forty-five. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Ella, for your report. Board members, now's your opportunity to ask about pesticides. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Ella?
Question?
Yes, Ms. Paula, please go ahead.
Um, I just heard that in New Oanu Valley Park, we have a lot of fleas. And then areas in New Oanu, is that used at all in our area in New Oanu? Because, um, these wild cats that are being fed in the park are carrying all these fleas and people are really getting bit.
Hmm, um, unfortunately, right now, we only have, um, act or, sorry, detailed data from twenty nineteen that's been sorted out into maps from HAPA, um, and.
Can you talk slower?
Yes, sorry.
I get, I I'm so old that, you know, I won't, it bounces off my head. I get, I'm not getting it. Thank you.
Yeah, of course. Um, in the twenty nineteen data that HAPA was able to organize for us, um, there was no restricted-use pesticides reported in twenty nineteen in New Oanu specifically, but that definitely could have changed within the last six years, and that's a big reason why we want to advocate for better reporting so we can have more up-to-date data about restricted-use pesticides. Additionally, this doesn't.
So do you work with the State Department of Health on, um, okay, Paula, killing fleas and stuff?
Um, I'm not personally super knowledgeable about that, but I can take that back to, um, our office manager, Yvonne. She might have more information, and we can also ask, um, our contacts with the Department of Health as well.
Because using pesticides in areas is kind of dangerous to me, especially if you've had cancer or you're getting cancer for something. Anyway.
Good comment, Paula, except, um, she's not, she's out of our district, but we can, we can further research that. Thank you. Any other board members have any questions for Ms. Ella? Please speak now. If not, I'm going to ask a question. Ms. Ella, has your representative spoke to the Department of Agriculture and Biosecurity regarding your concerns?
Yes, we have, um, tried to take it up with Rep. Cory Chen, who's the new head of the Agriculture Committee. Um, he definitely is very focused on invasive species for this upcoming session. So hopefully, we can kind of pair our focus on organic ways to limit those with his focus on invasive species. Um, and we also have been talking with the Department of Agriculture.
Oh, yes, go ahead. The Department of Agriculture and Biosecurity, since they regulate pesticides.
Yeah, my bad.
Yeah, they regulate pesticides and, um, just to let you know, I'm the Title VI Coordinator, and the EPA, because of a complaint from Earth Justice way back in twenty sixteen, required the department to enter into an informal resolution agreement because of spraying of pesticides and the harm to the native Hawaiians in the community, um, on West Kauai and Molokai back in twenty sixteen. So only the last year, this past legislative, um, session, we, the Department of Agriculture and Biosecurity obtained funding for a drift monitoring study. And I hope that, um, the pesticides department will be working more on updating their laws. And I I want to suggest that the representative work with the department also, since they are the source of enforcement for pesticides for the state of Hawaii.
Definitely. We definitely want to make sure we're working with them so that we're all on the same page about things and we can properly make laws enforcement.
Yes, because it it makes more sense to work directly with the agency instead of going out to the community and soliciting comments since the agency is the entity that enforces the pesticides laws.
Definitely. We've definitely been in a lot of.
Please encourage, no, no, please encourage the representative. Please encourage the representative to continue dialogue with the department on some of these issues and perhaps they could work out a resolution as well. Any other questions from any other? Thank you. Does anyone else have any whether, um, any board members have any other questions for Ms. Ella from Representative Peruso's office? Now's your chance to ask questions on pesticides. If not, um, do we have any public members that have any questions from the audience?
No.
No? Okay, thank you so much. Um, thank you so much, Ms. Ella, for providing your, uh, presentation that was most informative, and thank you for visiting us at Neighborhood Board Twelve.
Thank you.
Thank you. I am going to move on to item G, federally elected officials and other elected officials. Do we have anyone from the audience that falls into this category that would like to make a report? As I peruse through the, uh, webex, I don't see anyone. So I.
None.
None, thank you, uh, Assistant Clark. I will move on to item number seven, meeting minutes. Members, um, you have a motion or let's, I think we do it informally, but would you like to look at the July fifteen meeting minutes? Does anybody? We're we're pretty. We're, we're pretty informal about this section, and if, if we're not, please go ahead and make a motion. And second, but please look at the minutes. Yes, members-
Chair.
Yes.
Typically, what we've done is, is just say, does anyone want to offer any amendments?
That's right.
And so that way, that way they have to affirmatively offer amendments. And if they don't, then we will say, accept it as distributed, just FYI, but you can, you can do it as you will, but that's-
No, no, that's a great suggestion.
Thank you.
Does anyone, thank you, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say that right now. Does any member have, want to offer any amendments to the existing minutes as distributed? Please go ahead and speak your piece.
This is Paula.
Yes, Paula, please go ahead. You have the floor.
I was disappointed in my security watch minutes with the police department regarding the Toyota truck. It's not in the minutes at all. And everybody up as far as upper New Uwano and down here as far as the Leica are upset with this man in the area, but it wasn't even put in the minutes. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. It's so noted. Oh, yes.
So Board Member Kourishige, the, the changes to the format for the minutes will be applied for this current month in August. Last month, they were written with our old format where we didn't identify speakers in the questions, comments, and concerns. But for the month of August, the the description of the truck and, and your, your BOLO will be so noted.
Thank you, Members.
My question is, why would you do that and leave it out totally when it affects the whole section of the upper New Uwano?
Member Kourishige, I think he did say that they were following an older format, but they will be moving forward and so noting these comments in the minutes.
They better put it in because people are upset up here. They're tired of people going on their property and stealing.
Thank you. And, yes, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yes.
Thank you both for your concerns. It is so noted, Miss Member Kourishige, and will be corrected.
Yes, thank you.
If not, shall we move forward with the minutes as they, as they are distributed and will be accepted? Okay, they will be accepted as distributed. Thank you. With no other comments, I'm going to move on to item number eight, board business. Starting with item number A, walk, bike, drive, Hawaii DOT, and the Hawaii bicycling league. Do we have anyone from the audience that would like to make a presentation on this? Or, Ms. Paula, I think this might have been one of your categories. Nope?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, one of my categories on the legislature were four times before we got bills passed. And I think everyone should be on a bike, a bikey, or whatever, the electric bike, whoever bike, should be wearing a helmet. And the police need to start doing that before a number of other people get killed, which we did have last month. I think three people that were involved. And I don't think as a principal therapist, I want to see any more of the TBIs. Traumatic brain injuries that can kill you. And I'm disappointed in the legislature. It took them so long to get it done for four years. And then they only did it from sixteen down to newborns, I guess, would be sixteen to zero. And they forgot about the others, twenty-one and above, who are the ones getting killed also on every island. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Kourishige. Perhaps you could propose an amendment with the representative in the future. Board members, do you have any other comments on this subject, item number A? Now's your chance to ask Paula any questions that you have. If not, I will, thank you, Paula, for your presentation. I'll move on to item B. Overgrown banyan on Pacific Heights Road. This was an inquiry from Ms. Porter. And she would like to make a short presentation to discuss her item. Ms. Porter, are you in the audience? Or are you attending the meeting tonight?
Well, Chair.
Yes.
I, I did tell her that I would open the discussion. I don't know if she's in attendance. But the issue was is there's, as been brought up before, there's someone in our neighborhood that has a tree on their property that is very big, very large, has dropped branches in the past, and it overhangs the one entrance and exit to a large part of Pacific Heights area. And the resident in question had, had asked our neighborhood board to send a letter on the community's behalf to the homeowner, I guess, asking them to look into getting something done about the tree. You know, I, I think she wrote a personal little letter asking and, and gave, giving a list of arborists. So I think that that, that's essentially what she is asking. I don't know if she's here, but anyway, that's, that's all I have to offer, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, do you have any comments on this issue or any report? Please speak up or raise your hand. I thought it hurt someone. For those of you who have your mics on and you're not speaking, will you please mute them? Because there's some noise interference, but if not, thank you, Member Smith, for the summary of the issue. I will now move on to the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. We have a presentation made by Lee Se. Lee Se Fawn-
Chair, Chair, I'm sorry. Can I wrap this up? By the, you know, because I explained the problem, but let me just follow up to say, and, and I know that we had talked or we had emailed. And I don't know that it's the position of the neighborhood board to necessarily send that type of item because this resident worked very closely with someone in Tyler Dos Santos Tam's office. And their representative really tried to, to, to get this addressed with the city, and they were unsuccessful. So in, in my conversation with the chair, we sort of determined it was, it's really outside of our purview. So, but just to wrap it up, and I was hoping the, the resident would come and, and, and ask herself, and we could explain that. But absent that, I just wanted to wrap, wrap it up. Thank you, Chair.
No, thank you. I'm sorry. I should, I should have said that as well.
No worries.
It's, it's a tree on private property, which is my comment, and if you want to stay away from lawsuits, I would suggest that we do not get involved. But that's just my comment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Smith. With that being said, does anyone else have any comments on this issue? If not, I'm going to move on to item number C and introduce the person from the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. Do we have Ms. Lee Se Fawn Sekorn in the audience?
No.
No? Okay, I guess that person didn't make it. That's okay. We'll move on to item D. Sidewalks and AD compliance on Poli Highway. This was brought up by Member Kourishige. Member Kourishige, would you like to have the floor? To make a brief opening statement on this issue? Member Kourishige, is she here? I think she fell off. Okay, well, let's give her some time to come back. I will move on to item number E. Community Resource Fair on October eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. This is an invitation by Representative Jenna Takanuuchi, requesting Neighborhood Board twelve's participation to obtain a table and participate in this fair at the Kuakini Health Center's auditorium on October eighteenth. And I put it on the agenda just to write, mention discussion and ask if anyone wants to participate. I do see Representative Takanuuchi on the screen, and Representative, would you like to provide some details on this to the board? If not, did I cover all of them? Go ahead, please.
Thanks, everybody, and thank you, Chair, for bringing this up. So just quickly, we're trying to just put together a resource fair. I've just been getting, you know, feedback from the community that, you know, people are looking for opportunities to connect with neighbors, see what's going on in the district. So when I was talking with Kuakini Medical, they were also looking to do kind of some kind of connection outreach to the community. So I thought it was a great thing to just feature a lot of the organizations who are doing such good work in the community, including our neighborhood boards. So we're just trying to gauge interest right now. Hopefully, whoever's interested is free to come have a table. You know, we're reaching out to some of our nonprofits, Monique La Pacific, the Senior Center, St. Francis. We have all those guys, and if anyone from the neighborhood board would like to come out and share, and hopefully maybe even recruit some more people for the vacancies, we'd love to have you. No pressure, though, because I know it's a weekend and all of that. So, but if anyone is interested in just kind of sharing the message, because a couple hours on a Saturday, we'd love to have you guys.
Thank you, Representative Takanuuchi. I guess, does anyone want to make a motion for discussion, or is it too late for that already? Sorry. Because I guess this is an opportunity to decide if we want to participate or not, because I need volunteers or we would need volunteers to come out and participate. So that's why I put it on the agenda. So do we have a motion from members? Are you interested in participating in this fair? It's October eighteenth, so there's some time. If you don't feel like discussing it tonight, we can always push it back. Yes, I hear some. Member Lee, please go ahead. You have the floor.
Still moved.
Thank you. We have a motion from Member Lee. Do we have a second? Do we have a second? No second? No one, no one's interested?
Second.
Oh, thank you. Great, okay. Um, yes, opening it for discussion. Member Lum.
I was just going to second the motion.
Sorry. Okay, thank you. Okay, do we have any interested members that would like to participate?
Well, Chair.
Yes.
Chair, I'm sorry. Can I, Representative, what, what are the perspective times of the event? Like, are we talking twelve to one, something like that, or, or I mean, not twelve to one, twelve to two, or do you, do you have any idea right now?
Yes. Shoot, I don't have the exact, sorry. Chair, do you have what I said? I want, I know, I should, sorry, I just saw an agenda, that's why I say. I think we're doing it from, it's pretty late, like from like nine, nine or ten to noon. Like, kind of just like, kind of mid-morning to early afternoon. And like Kuakini did say that they would open up both earlier in the day for setup if anyone needed setup, plus the afternoon on the Friday before, if anyone wanted to do that. But it's kind of just mid-morning. I'm so sorry, we kind of, we went kind of back and forth about the time. But I want to say it's from nine or ten till noon or one, so kind of like that mid-morning to lunchtime.
Thank you. So that's nine to twelve about the timeframe. And Member, I'm sorry, Representative Takanuuchi, I have a question. Is there a fee for to participate? No. Okay, no fee, thank you.
Also, Kuakini is also giving free parking to everyone who is participating and also attending.
Great. Members, do we have any discussion? Are you all interested in participating or volunteering for this event?
I'm interested, but I can't commit right now.
Okay.
But as, as we get a little bit closer, definitely. And I'd like to get more information too as well, please.
Well, please go ahead and ask if you have.
Oh, no, just as, as it gets a little bit closer of all the details and who's participating and everything else as well.
Okay, great. Shall I keep this on the agenda, members, for further discussion as we get closer to the event? I see. Okay, great, thank you. I will keep it on the agenda and we will discuss it at the next meeting. Please ponder about this because voluntary participation would be needed, and it would be a great opportunity to look for, look for those to fill our vacancies. Thank you, Representative Takanuuchi.
Sure. Oh, sorry, just really quick, I guess. So next month, I can bring a list of what's going on as far as what's going to happen. It's just kind of open. Everyone who wants to participate can just have a table to share information. But I can definitely bring a list of who else is, has shown interest by next meeting to share with the board.
You, you're muted.
Thank you. Sorry about that. We will keep it on the agenda and discuss it further at the next meeting. And I promise, because I know I left a lot of things out of the agenda this time. My apologies.
I have a question.
Yes, Member Greve.
How, how are they going, how are you disseminating the, the information to the, to the, to the community? That these resources, this is a resource fair for them.
Go ahead, please, Representative.
Sure, thanks for the question. I mean, from my office, we're going to be doing a mailer. I'm also partnering with Representative Daniel Holt, who's our neighbor just to the west of us. So he's also going to be email or mailing people in our area. I'll also be emailing it out to my email list. Kuakini Medical has also shown interest in helping us advertise. You know, I think we'll do a couple banners, both on their property and at kind of the major intersections around the area to let people know what's happening closer to the date. So all those things and, you know, sharing with organizations like you guys at the Neighborhood Board and whatever else I'm going to, to let them know what's happening.
Thank you. And I have one question. Will the other Neighborhood Board, our neighbor Board number fourteen, be participating? Or did you invite them as well? Just to let the other members-
Not, I, 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 yes, I did. Because it originated more kind of in my area, I did invite Laleha, Alava Neighborhood Board. They are participating. Again, no pressure. But yes, they, they are sending a couple of representatives to the resource fair.
That's great. I just wanted to let the members know that they could meet the other members. Thank you. That being said, oh, yes. Member Sark?
Yes, yeah. So for the record, and so for Neighborhood twelve, I will just state that then Board Member Lee will just perhaps withdraw his motion and hearing no objections, this agenda item is postponed until the next regular meeting.
Sounds good, if that's okay with everyone else. Thank you. Thank you. With that being said, I'm going to move on to the approval of the July fifteen, twenty twenty-five meeting minutes.
Yeah, we included it twice by accident.
Yeah, I'm sorry. My apologies, everyone. I just, it just dawned on me that we went over that. Okay, item number nine. We're almost done, gang. Item A, new Neighborhood Board term. Oh, I just wanted to make sure that everybody filled out their contact form, oath of office, and did the Sunshine Law video training. Is, are there any members that did not complete this? Member Sark, do you know of any members that need a reminder? Or are we complete with this task?
There is still some time, but yeah, I, I was gonna hope that perhaps for Board Member Smith, if he's still in contact with Board Member Mason Iona, NCO really would like to have all board members take the oath of office and get sworn in by the end of this month, August thirtieth. But if, if, yeah, Board Member Smith, if you could reach out to him and he could either contact us or perhaps he could request an extension, that would be very helpful.
Yeah, I think it's likely, I, I think it's likely that he will not join the board any longer due to health limitations. I shouldn't even say issues. So let me reach out to him. I'll make sure of that. But he, he's had, you know, he, he's been a member of this board for a long time, and he always complied. So I, I, I assume that, yeah, it's probably not good news, but I, I'll reach out and confirm that. Thank you. And I'll let you know, Chair.
Thank you. I'm glad we're extending the courtesy to Board Member Mason. Thank you very much for bringing that up. Item number B, our next board meeting, the next New Uwano Punchbowl Neighborhood Board meeting will be held in September sixteenth at seven o'clock PM. Any announcements? I know-
I think Paula has something. I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Miss, Member Kourishige, you have the floor.
Oh, she's, she's still on mute, perhaps. If Paula, Board Member Kourishige, if you could unmute.
Board Member Kourishige, you need to unmute. Yep. Give that phone a tap. There you go. Oh, one more time. There you go.
Sorry. Oh, I'm talking to myself. I don't know where I am at on that taking the Sunshine Law and all that. I did that how many times already? So I need to do that again, I guess. And I can't get anywhere because I'm in a wheelchair, so what am I going to do?
Member Sark, do you have?
Oh, yeah, well, then, yes, your other option is you, you, you can submit the, the documents virtually, you know, like just email. But you could have someone help you fill out the PDF forms.
Well, well, I don't want to say I don't know how to do that, but I'll talk to you tomorrow if I can, Brandon.
Okay, yes.
Thank you. Um, I think for the announcements, just in our Google Drive, and I know Chair, former Chair Smith mentioned, he usually reads off what we receive in the mail relating to solicitation of comments. DPP had a reviewing of a CUP addition, a use permit minor. That expired on August 15th, so it was for the Kamiaia Schools daycare, daycare facility and modifications for the elementary, intermediate, and high school campus. DPP also has a standards review, and I think he mentioned this at the previous meeting about ordinance 2412, 2415 regarding Airbnb's and TVUs or, what is it? For transient, transient vacation units. Lastly, yeah, so those were the other two things in the Google Drive. In case you're interested, please refer to that. And if not, I'm ready to proceed with adjournment and hope to see you all at the September 16, 2025 meeting at 7 o'clock. Thank you very much, everyone, for attending. And thank you, everyone in the audience for attending. And thank you, Neighborhood Assistant Sark, for your guidance and everyone. Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Bye.
Good night, everybody. Thank you.